The time is 5:04. I'd like to remind everyone to silence your electronic devices. We'd like to begin by acknowledging the land in which we gather, which is territorial homelands of the new, the Moapa Band of Paiutes and the Las Vegas Band of Paiutes. Excuse me, the NwU from Moapa Band of Paiutes and the Las Vegas Band of Paiutes. We're going to move on to item 1.01, the flag salute. At this time, I'd like everyone to stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and with this blood of our teeth.
I'd also like to kindly acknowledge the newest trustee, trustee Miguel. Grateful that he's here. Yes, yes, starting civic engagement early. Perfect. Trustee Guzman, are you ready to make the motion to approve the agenda?
Thank you. Madam Vice President, members of the Board, I would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda with the following changes. Additional reference material is provided for item 3.01, American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds, the ARP-SR3, Annual Use of Funds Report. Delete item 3.02, Public Hearing on and Possible Approval of the Memorandum of Agreement Between the Clark County School District and the Clark County Education Association Regarding Summer Learning Program 2023.
Trustee Williams.
A second.
Very good. We have a motion by trustee Guzman and a second by trustee Williams. Trustees, please cast your ballot. Trustee Ford.
Aye.
Very good. The motion passes seven to zero. Now, before I open the consent agenda, this is a time for anyone who's not had a chance to complete a yellow form to submit their public speaker card. If this is your first time, you can take a yellow card and submit it to Lisa. If you have not done that already, please do so now, otherwise we will not be taking any additional cards. Let's see, we're going to start with individuals who've signed up in advance. We've got Mr. James Bayless, Kenneth Paul, and Charlene Paul.
Hello. How are you guys doing today, James Bayless, for the record? Um, so question, since you guys don't write these agenda numbers out no more, did you guys just remove the harbors again? No? That one's still on? Cool. So, I was just asking, I keep asking, and I'm gonna, I guess I'm gonna keep asking, I'm curious why you peoples keep throwing these people money when it's a referral service? You can get the same information from them as you call 211. You don't even need the referrals to walk into the building. You can just walk in there. But if you, if your whole school system, including our superintendent, is ignoring a court order that's written by a judge and signed by a psychiatrist, by your own system, and a contract written by the superintendent that was prior to you, how can you keep throwing the money if they're ignoring the paperwork? Wouldn't that be considered money laundering? I think that is money laundering, isn't it? So, I'm just curious, um, this is like the numerous time I've been up here, because again, this all pertains to that arrest that happened that Fremont said didn't exist and everybody else and due process that's going on right now, that Danny Bahar ain't even acknowledging. We're in a due process right now, that man don't return phone calls or emails. But you guys have a manual written out for that. Is that just to look pretty? Because it sure in the hell ain't being followed. Ms. Linda addressed it just last week, that federal laws are not being applied. That is a federal law. Due process is a federal law. I understand because of Danny Bahar being the AG and all, he gets to break those federal laws, and who's going to say anything about it? Um, you would actually rely on the Las Vegas Economic Alliance, but my man's the chairman, so what you gonna do? When you're the chairman and the superintendent, and you hold the monopoly over the city, what do you do? I almost got the man fired, but then he managed to actually pull a rabbit out of his hat. And then, oh, and I found out why you guys got that contract early. Probably because you didn't want the sped departments meeting to be heard prior to his contract, because, you know, that 53%? That's the 47% that's missing. Deanna got a nice little roast about that on December. And she's, so yeah, I'm just curious how he got a new contract and got A when there's 47% of your sped students are left behind and didn't get great grades? And as you guys addressed in the focus on last meeting, it was below par. So, where did his A come from again? How the hell is he still sitting here? Just questions. Have a good day, Lola.
Trustee Brooks, for the record. Kenneth Paul, Charlene Paul. Ken, welcome.
Thank you. Kenneth Paul, former principal, Consent Agenda 2.15 CCSD Regulation 2130. This reorg regulation is a status quo document. It contains a central perspective only. I am certain central leaders did not consult or seek the perspective of local leaders and communities. Principals and SOTS were not involved, yet ironically, NRS 388G is a governance model to balance central and local governance. Trustees, Nevada Superintendent Joan Ebert and State Board of Education, you are allowing the same few central leaders to keep near status quo. Consider the following: CFO Jason Gowdy and Chief Strategy Officer Kelly Cole-Paul perpetuated a deception for years that dollars for identified central services were actually in the schools and controlled by local principals and SOTS. This deception and violation of the law even by itself should be enough for Nevada Superintendent Joan Ebert to issue a notice of noncompliance and appoint a compliance monitor or monitors. In the past and now, these few CCSD individuals did not seek clarification of the intent and purpose of the law from Senior Deputy Attorney General David Gardner, an original sponsor of the decentralization bill that became law. Key individuals that know the purpose, intent, and spirit of this law were not sought out or consulted. Instead, much like putting the fox in charge of the hen house, they have wasted countless hours and taxpayer money with in-house lawyers to pick apart every word and phrase in order to meet their status quo aims. It is not CCSD's role to quote "interpret the law." These CCSD centrally created regulations do not reflect the will of the people, local communities, SOTS, or school leaders. In fact, as a result of the last four to five years, most local school leaders and SOTS do not know or understand NRS 388G, and that is the way these central leaders prefer it, status quo. Many SOTS have become glorified PTAs, not governance boards. It is no secret the school leaders are fearful to push against the bureaucracy of CCSD. Remember how many leaders came from Florida with Superintendent Jara? How many are still here? Look at the mass exodus now of educators on all levels. Trustees and Superintendent Ebert, after recently listening to key Clark County leaders and sitting down with some Nevada state senators, either let the reorg get implemented as intended or the people in local communities will demand the breakup of the CCSD. But the real, but real this time, not reorg. CCSD has proven that it will not reform itself without major intervention. It is ironic that these regulations on the agenda this evening only represent a central spin of an intended law that would decentralize the district. Along with this public statement, I will submit to the trustees, Nevada State Superintendent and the Nevada Board of Education, points of disagreement with CCSD Regulation 2130 as you seek to decentralize, centralize all of CCSD's central efforts to keep the status quo and keep decision-making and money in central control to the detriment...
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Charlene?
Charlene Paul. This reorg law, I've been watching and listening to, my husband's been working on it for years. Superintendent Jara, it was put into law two years before you were hired in this district, and you, Board of Trustees, have allowed the tail to wag the dog ever since he has been here. In the private sector, Superintendent Jara, you would not have a job. You would have, when you were fired, you would have stayed fired. I don't understand how a Board of Trustees who has one employee cannot get him corralled and cannot get him into compliance with a Nevada state law. And then, as he continues to thumb his nose at the Nevada state law, and you as well, you reward him with an extended contract of three years so we get to have the pleasure of him running the school district the way that he wants to run the school district for another three and a half years. And he got a pretty healthy raise added on top of his overbloated, what he's making right now. There are some of the trustees that ran to, in order to get elected, by saying that to my face, one of them, that when they got elected, the first thing that they would do was work on getting rid of Jara.
Charlene, forgive me, what, can you please pause the clock? What is this in reference to?
This is in reference to the reorg law.
Then please stay on that topic.
That's the topic that I'm, because he is not, and that was the conversation that I had, that with this, this trustee, that he's not sticking with this reorg law, he's not following the reorg law. First thing I do when I get elected is to try to get him out of here so that we can work under the law, and it's not happening. You guys have one employee, one. Get him in compliance with the reorg law. Stop allowing him to tell you what he wants to do and what he doesn't want to do, and what he agrees with and what he doesn't agree with, because his opinions don't matter when it comes to the law. Get your one employee corralled. Get him compliant with the law, or step aside and let somebody else who will do the job. Thank you.
All right, we've got Ed Gonzalez, Jan Zinko Martinez, and then Andy G. Welcome.
Association Regarding Summer Learning Program 2023.
Trustee Williams?
I'll second.
Very good. We have a motion by trustee Guzman and a second by trustee Williams. Trustees, please cast your ballot. Trustee Ford?
Hi.
Very good. The motion passes seven to zero. Now, before I open the consent agenda, this is a time for anyone who's not had a chance to complete a yellow form to submit their public speaker card. If this is your first time, you can take a yellow card and submit it to Lisa. Have not done that already, please do so now. Otherwise, we will not be taking any additional cards. Let's see, we're gonna start with individuals who've signed up in advance. Got Mr. James Bayless, Kenneth Paul, and Charlene Paul.
Hello. How are you guys doing today, James Bayless for the record? Um, so question, since you guys don't write these agenda numbers out no more, did you guys just remove the harbors again? No? That one's still on? Cool. So, I was just asking, I keep asking, and I'm gonna, I guess I'm gonna keep asking. I'm curious why you peoples keep throwing these people money when it's a referral service? You can get the same information from them as you call 211. You don't even need the referrals to walk in the building. You can just walk in there. But if you, if your whole school system, including our superintendent, is ignoring a court order that's written by a judge and signed by a psychiatrist, by your own system, and a contract written by the superintendent that was prior to you? How can you keep throwing the money if they're ignoring the paperwork? Wouldn't that be considered money laundering? I think that is money laundering, isn't it? So, I'm just curious, um, this is like the numerous time I've been up here, because again, this all pertains to that arrest that happened that Fremont said didn't exist and everybody else and due process that's going on right now, that Danny Bahar ain't even acknowledging. We're in a due process right now. That man don't return phone calls or emails. But you guys have a manual written out for that. Is that just to look pretty? Because it sure in the hell ain't being followed. Ms. Linda addressed it just last week, that federal laws are not being applied. That is a federal law. Due process is a federal law. I understand because of Danny Bahar being the AG and all, he gets to break those federal laws and who's gonna say anything about it? You would actually rely on the Las Vegas Economic Alliance, but my man's the chairman. So what you gonna do? When you're the chairman and the superintendent and you hold the monopoly over the city, what do you do? I almost got the man fired, but then he managed to actually pull a rabbit out of his hat. And then, oh, and I found out why you guys got that contract early. Probably because you didn't want the sped departments meeting to be heard prior to his contract, because you know that 53%? That's the 47% that's missing. Deanna got a nice little roast about that on December. And she's, so yeah, I'm just curious how he got a new contract and got A when there's 47% of your sped students are left behind and didn't get great grades? And as you guys addressed in the focus on last meeting, it was below par. So where did his A come from again? How the hell is he still sitting here? Just questions. Have a good day, Lola.
Trustee Brooks for the record, Kenneth Paul, Charlene Paul. Kenneth, welcome.
Thank you. Kenneth Paul, former principal, consent agenda 2.15 CCSD Regulation 2130. This reorg regulation is a status quo document. It contains a central perspective only. I am certain central leaders did not consult or seek the perspective of local leaders and communities. Principals and SOTS were not involved. Yet ironically, NRS 388G is a governance model to balance central and local governance. Trustees, Nevada Superintendent Joan Ebert and State Board of Education, you are allowing the same few central leaders to keep near status quo. Consider the following: CFO Jason Gowdy and Chief Strategy Officer Kelly Cole Paul perpetuated a deception for years that dollars for identified central services were actually in the schools and controlled by local principals and SOTS. This deception and violation of the law, even by itself, should be enough for Nevada Superintendent Joan Ebert to issue a notice of noncompliance and appoint a compliance monitor or monitors. In the past and now, these few CCSD individuals did not seek clarification of the intent and purpose of the law from Senior Deputy Attorney General David Gardner, an original sponsor of the decentralization bill that became law. Key individuals that know the purpose, intent, and spirit of this law were not sought out or consulted. Instead, much like putting the fox in charge of the hen house, they have wasted countless hours and taxpayer money with in-house lawyers to pick apart every word and phrase in order to meet their status quo aims. It is not CCSD's role to quote "interpret the law." These CCSD centrally created regulations do not reflect the will of the people, local communities, SOTS, or school leaders. In fact, as a result of the last four to five years, most local school leaders and SOTS do not know or understand NRS 388G. And that is the way these central leaders prefer, at status quo. Many SOTS have become glorified PTAs, not governance boards. It is no secret the school leaders are fearful to push against the bureaucracy of CCSD. Remember how many leaders came from Florida with Superintendent Jara? How many are still here? Look at the mass exodus now of educators on all levels. Trustees and Superintendent Ebert, after recently listening to key Clark County leaders and sitting down with some Nevada state senators, either let the reorg get implemented as intended or the people in local communities will demand the breakup of the CCSD. But the real, but real this time, not reorg. CCSD has proven that it will not reform itself without major intervention. It is ironic that these regulations on the agenda this evening only represent a central spin of an intended law that would decentralize the district. Along with this public statement, I will submit to the trustees, Nevada State Superintendent and the Nevada Board of Education, points of disagreement with CCSD Regulation 2130 as you seek to decentralize, centralize all of CCSD's central efforts to keep the status quo and keep decision-making and money in central control to the detriment...
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Charlene?
Charlene Paul. This reorg law, I've been watching and listening to. My husband's been working on it for years. Superintendent Jara, it was put into law two years before you were hired in this district. And you, Board of Trustees, have allowed the tail to wag the dog ever since he has been here. In the private sector, Superintendent Jara, you would not have a job. You had, when you were fired, you would have stayed fired. I don't understand how a Board of Trustees who has one employee cannot get him corralled and cannot get him into compliance with a Nevada state law. And then, as he continues to thumb his nose at the Nevada state law and you as well, you reward him with an extended contract of three years so we get to have the pleasure of him running the school district the way that he wants to run the school district for another three and a half years. And he got a pretty healthy raise added on top of his overbloated, what he's making right now. There are some of the trustees that ran to, in order to get elected, by saying that to my face, one of them, that when they got elected, the first thing that they would do was work on getting rid of Jara.
Charlene, forgive me, what, can you please pause the clock? What is this in reference to?
This is in reference to the reorg law.
Then please stay on that topic.
That's the topic that I'm, because he is not, and that was the conversation that I had, that with this trustee, that he's not sticking with this reorg law. He's not following the reorg law. First thing I do when I get elected is to try to get him out of here so that we can work under the law. And it's not happening. You guys have one employee, one. Get him in compliance with the reorg law. Stop allowing him to tell you what he wants to do and what he doesn't want to do and what he agrees with and what he doesn't agree with because his opinions don't matter when it comes to the law. Get your one employee corralled. Get him compliant with the law or step aside and let somebody else who will do the job. Thank you.
All right, we've got Ed Gonzalez, Jan Zinko Martinez, and then Andy G. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Jara. I apologize, I'm not used to talking in consent calendar. I usually get here much later, so. For the record, my name's Ed Gonzalez. I'm the community member at the Hickey Elementary School Organizational Team for yet another year. The reason I'm speaking is that, you heard at the last meeting, I did support this policy that you're doing, I think it's 2130. I think it's a flawed policy, but I think, like I said before, it's good enough to be workable. The concern I have coming up here today is that I mentioned the fact that I'm willing to work with the district, and I think we need to work together, not just for compliance, to make sure that the intent and the spirit of the reorganization, to make sure that principals have the autonomy to expand, you know, improve student leadership as air. But as I sat down, I heard the comments from the board, and it was, what was disturbing to me was the attacks at the state board members for basically, almost seemed like petty reasons for implementing the law. But more importantly was some members of this board saying that this wasn't driven by the community, the fact that this needs salespeople to pitch it. And I found that very condescending. We're trying to work together. And the reason I say that, if anybody was here from 2015, 2016, this is probably legislation that was probably the most discussed in the history of our state. There were 20 meetings. There were groups between the superintendent at that time, Pat Skorkowski, trustee Linda Young sat on the technical advisory committee, three mayors sat on the committee, representatives from both the PTA, the chambers within the Las Vegas Valley, all sat on this to figure out how we can improve education through this model. This item was constantly talked about, not including the meetings that we had with stakeholders groups, whether we went to the historic West Side with Yvette Williams to talk about in churches to make sure that we could reach out to the African-American community, reach out Fernando Romero in Hispanic and Politics on the East Side, going to North Las Vegas, the Henderson, from the Southeast Side to the West Side, from the Northwest to the Southwest into the Worlds. We spent enormous amount of time doing this. And even afterwards, we had committees with the, who talked about as well, with the Community Implementation Council headed by Glenn Christensen. We had Mo Dennis Chair Committee with the Working Group with the SOTs. And once again, we had Senator Roberson and Senator Ford on the committee dealing with it after the legislative session when this item be passed. We have three city council members on the Las Vegas City Council who voted for this legislation and one who worked as a consultant. We have three members of the county commission who's worked on, who voted for this. We have one person running for the Las Vegas City Council who sat on an SOT. We have one city council member in Boulder City who sat on an SOT. So it drives me nuts at times when we say, we need to sit here and work on this, and people are condescending to this. There's 2,000 SOT members. The first year we had this, 10,000 teachers voted for the SOTs. The reason why people are frustrated is because the district didn't have to do anything. They don't implement the law. So Madam Vice President, I've ran out of time again. Thank you so much.
Is Jan Zinko Martinez present? Jan Zinko, Jan Zinko Martinez? Hi. Andy G. And then after Andy, oh, Andy G., Amande Ovar Bueno is next.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Janixio Martinez. Yo tengo tres hijos, uno de ellos graduado en este año escolar 2022, y dos hijos estudiando aún en el distrito escolar. Hoy estoy aquí para apoyar al programa de CORE. CORE es lo personal me ha ayudado bastante, me ha apoyado en clases de tres, clases de nutrición, clases de superación personal, entre otras cosas más. Ellos han sido un soporte enorme para mí, ya que mi primer hija ha logrado graduarse.
Señora Jan Zinko Martinez, dame un momento, por favor. Tenemos translators on site today? We're getting them, okay. Me da un momento, por favor, porque su mensaje es muy importante y queremos que tengamos alguien que venga a traducir por usted.
Okay.
So, dame un momento, puede empezar de nuevo? Oh, vamos a darle más tiempo? Por favor, empiece desde el principio.
Okay, muy buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Janixio Martinez.
My name is Tom Martinez.
Yo tengo tres hijos, uno de ellos graduado en este año escolar 2022.
I have three sons, one of them graduated this year, 2022.
Y dos hijos estudiando aún en el distrito escolar.
And two of them still studying at the school district.
Hoy estoy aquí para apoyar al programa de CORE.
Today I'm here to support the program, CORE program.
CORE, en lo personal, me ha ayudado con clases de inglés.
Personally, CORE has helped me with English classes.
Clases de nutrición.
Nutrition classes.
Clases de superación personal, entre otras más.
And between other ones, it's personal preparation.
Ellos han sido un soporte enorme para mí, para mi primer hija, ya que ella ha logrado graduarse.
They have been a support for my first daughter since she has been able to graduate.
Con honores y ha seguido adelante con sus sueños de ser alguien importante en la vida.
With honors and she has been able to continue her dream to become somebody important in life.
Actualmente CORE sigue apoyándome con mi segundo hijo.
Actually, right now, CORE continues to supporting me with my son.
Para que siga enfocado en sus estudios y logre sus metas.
So he can focus on his studies and he can meet his goal.
Mi familia ha sido parte de CORE por más de cuatro años.
My family has been part of CORE for more than four years.
Y creo que si más personas supieran de este programa, sería de gran ayuda.
If I believe if more families knew about this program, it will be helpful.
Para que más estudiantes pudieran graduarse.
So more students can graduate.
Agradezco al personal docente y administrativo.
I thank the teaching staff and administration, sorry.
Te daron la oportunidad de hacernos presentes.
To give us the opportunity to be present.
Nos permita CORE lograr de ser parte de más escuelas.
And to let CORE be part of more.
Thank you.
Mil gracias. Thank you so much. Vamos a necesitar más traducción. No se vaya muy lejos, tal vez, okay. All right, maybe. Thank you. Andy G., Amande Ovar Bueno?
Buenas tardes.
Oh, sí. Okay, okay. Six minutes, please. Thank you. Por favor, diga su nombre para...
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Anay Almodóvar.
So my name is Anay Almodóvar.
En estos momentos estamos aquí porque soy mamá de dos estudiantes del CSD.
So I'm here to be the mother of students.
Es, actualmente el que percibe en CORE es mi hijo.
So my son is the one in CORE program.
Queremos hablar un poquito de CORE, en lo que, la experiencia que nosotros hemos tenido.
Wanna speak about the CORE program, the experience we've had with CORE?
Especialmente los ayudan mucho los muchachos, tanto académicamente como emocionalmente. CORE, al personal, está calificado para ayudarlos.
So they help persons with academic and...
Emocional.
And emotionally, all the staff is very qualified.
En familia, nosotros como padres nos ayudan con talleres. Actualmente para, emocionalmente, psicológicamente, nos han ayudado también.
So they also help the family as parents with emotional and academic support.
Nos han dado talleres como dijo mi compañera de nutrición. Nos han dado talleres para aprender a controlar nuestras emociones.
So they've helped us with shops on emotional and... To help control our emotions.
Actualmente nos están brindando ayuda con clases de inglés. Still learning English, so.
Actualmente nos están ayudando con clases de inglés. Sorry. They're currently helping us with English classes, so yeah, I'm still learning.
Nos están ayudando también durante esta pandemia. Nos ayudaron personalmente como familia cuando salimos todos contagiados. Ellos estuvieron al pendiente de nosotros, tanto para saber si estábamos pagando bilés, si teníamos comida, y nos...
They were very supportive during the COVID pandemic. When we were close to COVID, they reached out to us to make sure we were okay if we're able to pay the bills or if we had food.
Mi hijo ha recibido talleres de academia de arte, lo cual me pone feliz porque es algo que a él le gusta.
So my son has received a lot of art classes. It's something that he enjoys.
Ellos están terminar pendiente de que nuestros hijos estén académicamente. Vienen a la escuela, se reúnen una vez por semana con ellos. Habla para lo académico, se reúnen para ser voluntariados, lo cual también me pone feliz porque ellos aprenden un poquito de las personas que tienen, que están en alguna necesidad o... mayores.
So they try to reach out to make sure our students are doing okay. They...
Están haciendo voluntariado.
So they're making voluntary programs.
Quiero agradecer a todos por la atención, gracias por la oportunidad. Gracias a CORE por hacernos parte de su familia. Gracias por este momento.
So I wanna thank everybody. I wanna thank CORE for making us family. Once again, I wanna thank everybody.
Y ojalá CORE pueda ayudar a más.
And we hope that CORE can help more families.
Thank you.
Mil gracias. Thank you. Norberta Bello? Or Norbert A. Bello? Bienvenida.
Muy buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Norberta Bello. Como pueden, como pueden ver, yo trabajo para CSD. Soy a transportation aide.
As you can see, I'm a transportation aide. I work for CSD.
Estoy aquí porque CORE es una oportunidad muy grande para todos los estudiantes.
I'm here because CORE, it's a big opportunity for the students.
CORE ayudó a mis dos hijos desde el 6º grado hasta el 12º.
CORE has helped my two sons from 6th grade to 12th grade.
Y también les sigue ayudando cuando van al college dos años más para que puedan seguir estudiando y motivándolos.
And then they continue helping them while they're in college for two more years so they can study.
Y pues lo que me gusta de CORE es también que les da mucha información a los estudiantes, especialmente pues a mis niños, cómo conseguir becas para lograr su sueño, para pagar las clases, para la transportación, para...
What I like about CORE is that it gives a lot of information to my kids. Also like giving...
...ganar becas, cómo seguir hasta para casa.
So they get information how to get grants, how to get for gas.
Like gift card for gas, you know, to go to college. And me gustaría que CORE siga adelante, que siga ayudando a más familia, a más estudiantes.
I would like CORE to continue helping families, to keep helping other students.
Me acuerdo que cuando estaba la pandemia...
I remember when the pandemic was on.
CORE nos ayudó a los padres y a los estudiantes a seguir motivados online.
CORE helps us to continue being motivated, parents, just like parents and students, to continue online.
Nos daban información para que los niños no se depriman cuando estaba la pandemia muy fuerte.
They give us information for the students to not get stressed or while the pandemic was going on.
Y también nos ayudan a que sigamos, si queremos los padres seguir estudiando, a seguir preparándonos para el futuro. También nos dan mucha información a dónde ir y con quién hablar para seguir adelante.
Also they give us information to parents if we wanna continue studying and where to go and to continue CORE.
A mí me gustaría que CORE también vaya a diferentes escuelas porque hay mucha necesidad. Hay este...
I would like CORE to continue going to a lot of schools, because there is a lot in CORE.
Y también CORE ayuda a las familias necesitadas con alimento. Cada mes nos llega, nos mandan información por mensaje o por email para...
Also CORE helps with food for needy families. They send it emails or by regular mail, we get...
Bueno, muchas gracias por todo, por su atención. Y ahorita, en este momento, yo estoy muy feliz porque mi hijo, como la motivación que CORE le dio, él está yendo a college y está trabajando. Tipo, con la ayuda de ellos, yo pienso que mi hijo se hubiera salido o no hubiera seguido porque sí tuvimos una crisis muy dura.
Thank you for your attention. Thank you for your time. I'm happy right now because my son is going to college and he's working. If it wasn't for the CORE program, he probably would have gotten out of school right now.
Muchas gracias por todo. Buenas noches.
Thank you for everything. Good night.
Mil gracias, señora Bello. Gracias por su servicio. It appears there maybe have been some cards that were submitted after item 2.01 started. If you submitted your card after 2.01 started and you'd like to speak, unfortunately, we're gonna have to wait until item 4.01 at the end of the meeting to share, to give you a chance to share your remarks at this time. Do I have a motion to accept, excuse me, to adopt the consent agenda? It sounds like there may be some concerns from the audience. Allow me one moment to confer with... Oh, forgive me. No, that's, one moment. Ma'am, you said that you signed up in advance. What's your name? Ms. Bosch, we have you signed up for 4.01, Public Comment on Items Not Listed as Agenda Items. So you'll be soon. Okay, but I do have Ms. Binder. Thank you so much. Come on up.
Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board, Superintendent Jara. So something I noticed tonight, number one was, I believe our board president made very clear they weren't gonna fully implement all the new rules until the beginning of the year because it takes a while to get used to. But here we are, implementing the new rules. We also were told that we couldn't make special accommodations for anyone, let alone our student voices, but now we're making six-minute accommodations for translation. I am not opposed to that, but if we're going to give a preference to someone, we have... I am not opposed to that, but if we're going to give a preference to someone, we have to give it to everyone. And I think our entire community would stand behind giving student voices that opportunity to not sit here for three or four hours on a school night. Tomorrow's not a school night, but typically it is, but if you make one accommodation, you have to make more. So I'm just going to point that out, okay?
Ms. Binder, are you speaking on a...
I am, but I was pointing that out, yes ma'am, yes ma'am. We love Special Olympics, I really want to give a thank you to Monica Talbot, who helped me very much last school year in getting a bunch of information now into our sped community about the partnerships that Special Olympics makes for our special needs, special abilities kids. 2.16 has no price tag, that's very concerning to me, I looked at it seven times, I didn't see a price tag. You guys know, I want the opportunity, we want the development, we want the services, I just didn't see a price tag. And earlier, just a couple hours ago, our district made a tweet about denying community partnerships to the tune of $54 million about providing services for our children with the ESSR and the ART money. So to not see a price tag on that tonight was, you know, a little alarming. And if we want to jump back to the harbor, I told you guys I had a meeting, I did have a meeting with the DOJ on Friday about your data. I provided them all your data, I am so thankful for attorneys at the federal level willing to look at our data. So we'll see where that harbor comes back because our community is right, it is a referral service, they do not provide services, and our children need services, so wonderful stuff there. Then, we want to get into like some spending, right? So on 2.01, there's $4 million going to library material. Why is it that I'm hearing from librarians across the county that they can't get funds for new books in their libraries because it's not in the school budget, but then you see $4 million going through for libraries? How is that split up? Who gets priority on that? Like, where is that $4 million actually going? I can't see that because the public documents don't tell me that, just like the public documents didn't really show me the almost million dollars we spent in murals on schools in the last two years from carryforward funds. Murals, paint a school.
Trustees, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Trustee Guzman?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
President Cepeda?
I'll second.
Trustees, we have a motion by trustee Guzman and a second by trustee Cepeda. This time, please cast your vote. Very good, the motion passes seven to zero. This time, trustee Brooks, please read the warrants.
Thank you, ratified warrants as listed in the bills payable, transmittal, and board memorandum number 07-22-23 in the total amount of $152,589,623.22.
Thank you, trustee Brooks, this time we're going to move on to item 3.01. 3.01, 3.01. It looks like, forgive me, item 3.01 is the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds. That's ARP ESSR III and Annual Use of Funds Report. This is not an action item, however, there are people who've signed up for these, for this item. And before, I guess we just want to make sure, make one last announcement. You have a card, you'd like to speak on this item, please submit your card at this time. Dr. Jarra?
Thank you, Madam President, Vice President, members of the board. I just wanted to, as Ms., our chief strategy officer, Ms. Cal Paul shares with you, I just wanted to give enough because I know there's been a lot of conversation publicly that, you know, that we haven't updated the community. We have, we did our original plan, this is our first, I know I've worked with the board president to give an update to where we are, as you will see, and I know that Ms. Paul will share with you that we are ahead of schedule. I want to remind the board that we have until 2024 for the spend. And as we have been working through this, if you spend all the money upfront, it's wasteful spending. And if you spend it all at the end, again, it's just catching up. So we have a strategy that we will be updating you on where we are today in a continuous. And this is, as you will see, this is the largest investment in public education by the federal government. And, you know, our concern at the end is what happens when this money goes away is about shared conversations with the states, with the secretary of state, the secretary of education is where what happens when the money goes. And it's the state, would be the state's responsibility to continue moving forward. So I'm excited of where we are, but a lot of effort by our building principals, our staff up into really recovering and accelerating out of the COVID-19 pandemic. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to introduce the topic.
Thank you, Dr. Jarra. Ms. Cal Paul?
Madam Vice President, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Jarra. For the record, Kelly Kowal-Paul, Chief Strategy Officer. As Dr. Jarra mentioned, I'm here to provide you, for you and for the public, our first ARP ESSR III Annual Use of Funds Report. My presentation, I'm not going to read the report to you, but I will take a few moments to orient you to the full report, which is also attached as reference material in English and Spanish. We are also on track to get it translated in Tagalog, although we have to have some outside resources help us out with that one. The presentation will give you some high-level status information in terms of the implementation of these federal relief dollars that were allocated to the district under the American Rescue Plan. As you know, you've seen this slide before, what we refer to as ESSR is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, which was originally created by federal legislation in March of 2020. These are not the only federal relief dollars that the district has received, but they're by far the three largest allocations to the district to support relief efforts in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Tonight's presentation, of course, focuses on ESSR III funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARP Act, which are planned for use to support ongoing response to the pandemic, but also heavily focused on recovery from lost instructional time supports or achievement through the pandemic. We have, as Dr. Jarra mentioned, until September 30th of 2024 to obligate these funds, which is just under two years from today. And we are conscious of just how little time that is. Although I'm the one sitting here before you this evening, this report reflects the work of so many who deserve to be acknowledged for their efforts, including this board for their oversight, the superintendent and my peers in executive leadership for the work to develop, revise, implement, and monitor these investments. The individual project leads and contributors from across units, many of whom are sitting in the audience this evening, and the Grants Development Administration team who continue to dedicate their time and effort for these relief efforts for our students. Our work is supported by Jessica Rauch and her team from the Give Better Group, upon whom we rely for their expertise and experience and for whose partnership we are grateful. We also owe gratitude to the team at the Nevada Department of Education for their collaboration and ultimate approval of our spending plans and for their continued collaboration as we adjust and revise plans throughout this engagement. Of course, we would not be here at all if it weren't for the federal allocation of dollars to the district and to districts across the country to address the learning loss and social emotional needs of students disproportionately impacted by COVID-19, which was supported by our full Southern Nevada federal delegation, including Senators Catherine Cortez Masto and Jackie Rosen and Representatives Deana Titus, Susie Lee, and Stephen Horford. Finally, I would like to acknowledge again the work of our community partners, the 60 contributing community organizations, and the over 13,000 contributing community members who engaged in the Focus on the Future for Kids campaign in the summer of 2021 to inform the development of our ESSR III spending plan. Our team has continued to work toward pandemic recovery with our guiding principles in mind, you've seen this slide before several times also. We've maintained our focus on partnering with the community to emerge stronger post-pandemic by prioritizing learning acceleration, educator supports, and long-term sustainability, and we maintain the same guiding principles that you have seen and have been shared before. So the report itself is plainly organized and laid out, I hope. After acknowledgements and a letter from the superintendent and board president to the community is an introduction to our ESSR III allocation. That introduction includes key takeaways from the report, information about ESSR III and how the district developed the use of funds plan, our commitments to the community and our guiding principles, a high-level overview of how the district is using ARP ESSR III funds, and our repeated commitment to transparency with the use of these dollars. The majority of the document is the accountability section. It begins with an overview of spend status for the grant in total and for each project. The pages that follow that overview include detailed status information for budget implementing and implementation and spending for every project funded by ESSR III grouped by priority area. A few projects are highlighted throughout to provide a glimpse into the outcomes being realized already as a result of these investments. And also, as this board and members of the community have requested in the past, a status update of all projects that were included in the initial spending plan but are no longer being funded with ESSR III dollars is also included in the accountability section. Finally, the report concludes with a vision into our road to recovery, which we know may take several years, and our continued commitment to stewarding ARP ESSR III funds with transparency and fidelity. The first key takeaway from the Use of Funds Report is that ESSR III investments are already impacting schools, students, and families. With the goal of accelerating learning, you'll see in the report that many of our projects listed under the Student Success Priority Area are well underway. We cannot accelerate learning without strong Tier One curriculum and instruction. Every student has access to Tier One science curriculum and supplemental instructional materials in social emotional learning, the benefits of which you heard from a few of our principals at the October 13th board meeting during the student achievement update. Every student has access to a device and to internet access, we're fitting classrooms with technology that will support and enhance high-quality instruction. Every student has access to a wide variety of wraparound services and mental health supports. Every student has access to one-on-one tutoring, of which over 12,000 students have already taken advantage through paper tutoring. Ninety-seven teachers are currently earning a master's degree in ELL with an ELAD endorsement at no cost to them. We're also continuing to limit the impact of COVID-19 on schools and students through the COVID central operation and with operational supplies, which would include PPE, personal protective equipment. So far, though, we've been able to fund these efforts with ESSR II and other grants. And as some of the demands in this area continue to lessen, we hope you may see some of these project budgets utilized later in the budget period or allocated to other relief priorities altogether in future amendments. The report also illustrates the second takeaway, that the Clark County School District is heavily investing in educators to further pandemic recovery. As a result of nearly $70 million invested to recruit and retain top teachers to Clark County, the number of classroom vacancies has drastically reduced, and as you know, we've hired over 1,700 teachers since May. Teachers have access to research-based professional learning and literacy and in science instruction, and as already mentioned, access to ELL endorsement opportunities, and also access to a number of professional learning and pipeline-to-leadership opportunities. The report illustrates plainly how the district is fulfilling its promise of transparency and accountability in the investment of these federal relief dollars. You already know that over 13,000 stakeholders inform the work, and we are continuing transparency around the implementation of these investments. This very presentation and the ARP ESSR III Use of Funds Report is produced as a result of this work and the robust accountability system that we have put in place for ESSR III-funded projects. That transparency will expand to a broader community view of progress related to the strategic plan work. The data transparency and accountability project spend has been delayed, but the work has continued internally. In fact, we released an RFP and we're anticipating purchasing some services to provide, or to provide us some support with this project. But as we were not satisfied with the recipients' proposals, we decided to retool the project and undertake most of the work in-house. And I know the data team is excited about that work, I am at least. We're also accountable to specific requirements of ARP ESSR dollars. We certainly engaged in a meaningful consultation with stakeholders in the development of the plan in summer 2021. We are far exceeding the 20% required set aside to address disrupted learning. We have a safe return to in-person instruction plan, which has been updated every six months and presented to this board as required. And we have a waiver in place for the maintenance of equity requirement in accordance with the American Rescue Plan Act. Finally, the report illustrates that the Clark County School District is on track to make these impactful investments in service of pandemic recovery on time in order to make the most of the taxpayer investment in our children. As of October 1st, we had spent or encumbered just over one-third of the district's allocation, or just over $255 million. Most of the remaining funds are dedicated to budgeted spends, although, as I mentioned before, we do anticipate further amendments as additional adjustments become necessary. You'll remember that our initial ESSR III spending plan was approved in March of 2022. We had engaged in careful and structured planning activities while our application was pending and was being reviewed, which allowed us to ramp up implementation very quickly once the plan was approved. At this point, I have high confidence in our continued progress toward the spend of these dollars and the implementation of projects that will have a real impact on recovery from the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. Our teams have well-fought-out plans, their plans are very detailed. We have implemented a highly structured monitoring system that allows us to adjust resources and support as necessary on a regular basis. You'll see those adjustments in the form of additional amendments to our ESSR III application in the coming days. I anticipate engaging with the team in preparation for and submission of the next amendment this winter. Beyond that, and as we get nearer to the end of the ESSR III spend, the district and individual schools will have to start making decisions about which of these investments we or schools will want to fund once the relief dollars are no longer available. The district will make choices about what to continue funding through the use of general fund and, of course, what to discontinue funding in trade and through other grant opportunities. And schools will start making decisions about the use of their strategic budget and their carryforward dollars towards some of the resources or supports that they found impactful. We're keenly aware of how critical our successful execution of this work is, not only in the short-term recovery from pandemic losses for our students and for our system, but also for the long-term recovery and system improvement. With that, I'd be happy to turn it back over to Superintendent Jarra or to the Board of Trustees for questions or conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Cal Paul. Cal Paul. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to trustees, who? Kowal-Paul? Trustee, President Cepeda, I have you in the queue. There we are, thank you.
Thank you so much for this report. First question is specific to how are some of these monies aligned to our goals? So we have, you know, as we're moving more towards alignment in our efforts and making sure that our goals are reflective of our financials, like our financials are reflecting the importance of our goals. Can you share some examples of how this money is or isn't aligning with our goals?
Absolutely. Vice President Garcia Morales, President Cepeda, Superintendent Jarra, members of the board, that's really confusing, all mixed up today, but I'll get there. When we developed the initial ESSR III spending plan, we utilized the input of the community that I mentioned a few times today, that you're well aware of. We utilized pandemic, national pandemic impact data that was available to us at that time. If you remember, we didn't have state results yet when we built our initial ESSR III plan. And then we, as a leadership team, utilized the goals in our strategic plan to organize and prioritize the ESSR III work. So all of this work is in alignment with our goals, every bit of it. Every bit of it contributes to student achievement targets, every bit of it contributes to our student success goals related to mental health and student safety. So every bit of the spend will contribute to pandemic recovery and to furthering the district's strategic goals.
Thank you. I appreciate that, it's so important for us to be aligning all our efforts, I feel that's when we make the most impact. My following question, I suspect folks might want to know a little bit more about the adjusting piece. How quickly would that come to the board? How, like, can you explain a little bit more about the process?
Sure. Madam Vice President, members of the board, Superintendent Jarra, President Cepeda. Generally, we would go through a data analysis and a prioritization activity with leadership, taking a look at the projects that are in place now, kind of the status where we need to, like I said about the COVID central funds that we may need to reallocate, things like that. There are other projects where maybe we weren't able to hire enough people so that we need to reallocate some of those dollars. What we want to make sure that we do is spend every last penny of it that's been allocated to us in support of our students. So I anticipate that internal work taking place maybe a month or so, probably in November. Then with the development of the application, taking about a month throughout November with our grants team and building the actual application. And then we anticipate maybe a six-week back and forth with the state until approval. So you'd be looking forward at the board probably around mid-end January.
Thank you. Last question. So I come from a grants world. Sometimes the word obligated may not be something everyone knows. Can you share a little bit about what this money needs to be obligated by 2024 mean?
Yeah, generally, I probably would need to reach out to legal or phone a friend for the real answer, because I don't live in that grants world either that closely, Dr. Cepeda. But I can tell you that we're sort of setting a six-month early target for everything to be finished so that we can be sure we don't get to the end and go, oh, shoot, something didn't come up quite as expensive as we thought it was going to be and not have any time to adjust. Oh, great. Deb is here going to answer the question for me. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Jara, President Cepeda. In response to your question, in the grants world, obligated means that we have encumbered the expense. We have signed a purchase order. We have signed a contract with a vendor. Those are encumbered or obligated expenses. It doesn't become expensed, obviously, until the work is completed. And we have 120 days after the close of the grant, after that September 24th date, to actually pay for the work. So sometimes there is that delay. But as long as it is contracted or obligated by September 24th, it is an allowable expense for the grant.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your work. Thank you so much, Kelly and Ms. Colwell-Powell. And again, thank you very much for your work. I will remove myself from the queue.
Thank you, President Cepeda. Trustees, at this time, are there any other members who have questions? Trustee Guzman.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I have just a couple of questions. One has to do with our accountability piece. How are we holding ourselves accountable that our programs are working versus, so that we can modify and adjust when we send when we send our modifications into the State Board of Ed? How are we telling them that this is why we have to?
Madam Vice President, members of the board, Dr. Jara, trustee Guzman, Kelly Colwell-Powell for the record, buying myself time again, I do it all the time. I don't believe we have to tell them why we're making adjustments. However, we have built, I mentioned, blah, blah. I mentioned we've built a robust accountability system for this work. Project leads have developed detailed project plans, which include quarterly implementation and outcome measures, interim outcome measures, that we report on quarterly review in cabinet every single project. We focus strongly on projects that are not meeting their quarterly targets. That allows us to either retool the project or apply additional support or help think through some challenges or sometimes just retool the project plan a little bit. It will also, over time, though, tell us, as we look at spending quarterly in terms of what we anticipate spending and what we are seeing being spent, where we need to make some adjustments so that we are not surprised by underspent funds in any area. So there's a few different ways we look at it. The spending, making sure we're on top of the spending for each and every project, making sure we're on top of the actual work of the project itself and that that's being completed as planned. And then also, the outcomes we anticipate seeing for each project every quarter, making sure that those outcomes are happening. And if not, that would trigger us to have a conversation about how we want to do things differently.
No, I know Dr. Jara has an answer for me.
Thank you. Dr. Jara?
Madam Vice President, members of the board, I just want to, Ms. Colwell-Powell did a great job, but on a practicality, I guess, an example, when we were looking at it in cabinet as we were going through the process, one of the things that came up from the field, which is my extended cabinet is where I have principals that sit in there. Principals said, you know, we're doing Amplify, which is being funded through this program. And they said, well, we need more professional development, our teachers, and support. So it gave us an opportunity to say, let's look at what other grants, what other projects that we may be able to move and shift some dollars to provide more professional development for our educators in our schools to make sure that we're getting the support at the school. So that's a practicality, and that's the conversation that we're having around every single project on a quarterly basis, which then dovetails to trustee Cepeda's question on Focus 2024, which is our strategic plan. It dovetails to say, well, what are our goals and our targets? And that's every other, once we have this meeting and then we bring it at the following meeting with our principals on our strategic plan.
Thank you. There's one other piece. When we're talking about SEL and our mental health professionals, how are we in hiring those mental health professionals for our kids?
Madam Vice President, members of the board, Dr. Jara, trustee Guzman, I'm going to phone a friend again and ask for Dr. Barton's support.
Thank you.
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Jara, trustee Guzman. The Mental Health Services project, obviously, when we started the planning for this, there was an emphasis on people and hiring counselors and specialists to do the work. And as we've found, there is a shortage everywhere. And so with this plan, we relied on many extensive outside partners to help do the work, and they're tiered. We have many Tier Three supports in this S R plan that provide on-the-ground service from a Tier Three perspective, and even services that push into the home for those Tier Three students that need that extra, extra, extra support. We also have Tier Two, as an example, on all of our campuses across the valley, which includes telehealth options. And so one of our critical partners there is Hazel Health. So, and then Tier One, obviously, is everyone where we have that universal screener, where we try to identify three times a year how students are doing from a mental health perspective, and that's where we have Panorama as our screener. We always have a plan to hire more personnel. But at this time, we are definitely, and probably will continue in the near future, to continue to rely on these outside partners because our pipeline is not robust to fill those counseling, social worker, psychologist, those specialist positions.
Thank you. My last question is for Dr. Jara. There was a letter that urban superintendents signed that asked for extra time to spend the S R monies. And I know that as a district, we signed on. And yet, it looks like we are on track. So will we need that extra time?
Madam Vice President, members of the board, we signed on, actually, it's all urban superintendents and all superintendents and all Nevada superintendents also. Do we need the extra time? I mean, we're facing some challenges with supplying the man as well. So it's always good to err on the side of caution, but it's too early to tell. But extra time, to me, what I would tell you as we, how do we, and I know we talked about this. How do we not come off the cliff knowing our state investment in K-12 education? It helps us to kind of slowly come off the cliff if we have the extra time.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, trustee Guzman. Trustee Cavazos.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I thought trustee Williams was ahead of me. So trustee Guzman managed to ask the question about the mental health and staffing. So I'll just piggyback on that with the second half of that. When we're looking at the 3%, I believe it said for SEL and Mental Health Services, 22%, just in that little kind of area with what we were talking about with aligning, you know, to the goals that we had set, and it sounds like we've done a very good job of that. Speaking of the local community, when we had all those meetings and we had the presentations and everything, how does it align with what the community had asked for? Are we pretty close on that? And I'm asking that mostly because a lot of the public, they see the reference materials, but sometimes don't have a chance to read through all of them. So are we pretty closely aligned with what the community, our folks, express to us?
Madam Vice President, members of the board, Dr. Jara, trustee Cavazos. The community, if you'll remember, we had a community advisory council who did a ton of work synthesizing the input of all those community groups and gave us a list of priorities. The list was extensive. We were expecting a few. Their list was very detailed, very thorough. Things like equity was at the top of their list, transparency was number two, things like that. We took those priorities that the Community Advisory Committee gave us to build that first S R three spending plan. And then we put out this survey where we got 13,000 responses confirming that our plan was in alignment with what the community expected. Our plan has not changed significantly from that initial spending plan. And even the things, as you see in the report, that are no longer in the S R three plan, because they came through community input, that is why we are continuing to fund those priorities just through other means. And that is why we continue to report on those things for that added, just kind of layer of transparency for the community.
Thank you, Kelly. I appreciate that. That was the only question that I had.
Thank you, trustee Cavazos. I have a couple of questions. The ARPAS or requirements state that 20% of the required funding should address disrupted learning using evidence-based academic, social, and emotional learning strategies for vulnerable populations of students. Do we have, do we know how much? It's from the presentation and from the conversations that have been held, it sounds like we are above the 20%. I'm wondering if there is additional information about how much has been spent beyond the required 20%.
Madam Vice President, members of the board, Dr. Jara. I don't know if Deb has the exact calculation. I think the calculation is different than exactly lining up with our student success projects. I'll ask her to jump in. But you can see that the vast majority of our work is in support of student success priorities, which all would impact learning loss. Perfect amount of body.
Members of the board, Superintendent Jara, trustee Morales, Deb Hegna, Director of the Grants Department for the record. While I do not have exact figures for you tonight, I can tell you that certainly a large portion more, there is probably 70% of the student support funding that's being driven to academic support, and around 30% of that funding that is going to mental health.
Very good. Thank you. My next question is with respect to the Tier One instructional materials. There's a slide in here where we go through, okay, slide, page seven. We've allocated resources to purchase Tier One instructional materials for ELA, English Language Arts. I just need a reminder, like this has been brought up in previous meetings, in terms of the timeline, there are delays in updates on curriculum. But can you please remind me, remind us of the timeline? That will this be done before 2024?
Madam Vice President, members of the board, Superintendent Jara, Dustin Mansel for the record. We are very hopeful that we will have this done in time. So at this time, the State Department is conducting their review and selection of Tier One curriculum. We have several members of our Literacy and Language Development Department from the Curriculum and Instruction Division who are on that committee, helping the state with their review and selection. The current timeframe is that that would be done by March 2023 during this academic year. At that time, our Literacy and Language Development Department will elicit the support of educators and administrators to conduct our own district-wide review and selection process of the adopted Tier One curriculum approved by the state. The items that are then selected for kindergarten through grade 12 will then be selected as our Tier One curriculum for Clark County School District. Our goal is that we submit the purchase of those materials this spring to receive this summer to provide professional learning during the summer and throughout the 23-24 school year to our educators for an implementation starting August 2023.
Excellent. Thank you for that reminder. We discussed this last board meeting when we provided a very thorough overview of that process. You know, we definitely look forward to spending those resources, especially on materials that will help our students with the academic achievement and our educators ensure that they have the supports that they need. It doesn't look like we have additional questions at this time. Thank you very much for your, oh, forgive me. We do have public comment. I was excited to move on to the next thing, but we'll hold that excitement just a little bit more. Thank you for hanging tight there. We've got two members who have signed up in advance. It's Vicki Creidel and Anna Binder. Vicki?
Good evening. Vicki Creidel, reading teacher in CCSD and president of NEA of Southern Nevada. Good evening, trustees, Superintendent Jara. I'm looking at the S R three funds in use. One thing that I can say is an overwhelming concern is student behavior. And I understand that student behavior has become more challenging because of COVID, because of things our students have gone through and the trauma that they've gone through. We need to make sure that we give every allowable dollar to support our students' mental health. I have never seen things happening like what we're seeing right now. You know, my particular school has a very good team approach. It works. We're helping a lot of our students. It's very, very difficult. And educators don't have the skills to handle some of these problems. We can use every trick in our classroom management toolbox, and it's not enough to help these students. So I'm begging you to use some of that money to support our students' mental health, social, emotional well-being. Because if we can't hire the counselors and the social workers to support the educators, the educators cannot do this on their own. We need help, and it's not just my school. It's happening all over the district. And this is something that has to be addressed before we have another El Dorado. I'm just being honest, because this is very serious. And also, I want to remind you that without educators, none of these funds matter. If more leave, the funds won't do anything because you won't have anyone to work in the classrooms and to work in the school site. So please keep that in mind when you're completing your plans for S R. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creidel. Anna Binder?
Thank you. Anna Binder for the record. Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Jara. Three minutes, right? So, back at the end of May, I requested pretty much every S R audit, ARP audit, call it whatever you want. I got one back, which was only for S R one funds. We hadn't even spent half the funds. Part of the language in S R three was that we were supposed to kind of technically get a dashboard within 30 days of the grant application award for S R three funds to be made available to the public within 30 days of the acceptance of that email. Until today, we have seen no such data. So when I look at a billion dollars coming into our education system, and we have had no dashboard, the state has a dashboard, the county has a dashboard, cities have a dashboard. Where's our dashboard? This isn't even a dashboard. This is a presentation. So then, you guys know, over the years, I've been keeping track of every dollar that we've been spending for iPads and Chromebooks and all this wonderful upgrade of technology, right? But at last meeting- But at last meeting, I acknowledge we're seventh in the nation for computer science. But how is it that every single student in our district has a device? We have blown so much money in programs for reading and for math and for this and for that, and we still have like over 60% of our students who are not proficient. Oh, my gosh. Three minutes, a minute and 36. So then I saw the update, $52.5 million to nine community partners. I hope to God there's more than nine partners, because we have stood here for years and heard of our partners, I'll say it again, that are here with no profit to help us. We don't have to pay them a dime to show up to help our students, to help our children, to help our community, but somehow $52.5 million is out the door to community partners? Like, I get it, right? It costs money to make friends and have alliances, but our children don't need those. They need people who show up for them with true intentions, right? So then, $6.75 million for data and transparency, but I can't go into Open Book and line up a single vendor to the actual amount that you guys approve for purchase orders. It costs $20,000 for that, apparently. So in $6.75 million, we couldn't come up with the $20,000 to make Open Book the truly transparent operating that it should be? And I keep getting pushback on that. I can't print it. I can't export it. I can search it. I can scroll it. I can screenshot it, but I cannot disseminate it back out. And who got paid $332,000 to come up with this?
Looks like that concludes public comment. Trustees? Looks like we are ready to move on to item 4.01. Thank you, Ms. Koopaw Paul. Koopaw Paul. Thank you, Ms. Koopaw. We got it. Appreciate it. We're moving on to item 4.01. Public comment on items. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We're moving on to item 4.01, public comment on items not listed on, as action items on the agenda. Thank you for that reminder, Trustee Brooks, and thank you for your support. Trustee Guzman, item 3.02 was pulled from the agenda, so we will not be taking public comment on that. Moving on to item 4.01. I just want to, before we fully open 4.01, is there anyone who did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card? If not, please do so now. Once we begin this, we open up this item, we will no longer accept yellow cards. All right. We're going to start with James Bayless, Ellie Bosch, Kristen Thomas. Come on down, Mr. Bayless.
Hello. So we're, I assume we're at public comment? Oh. With this situation, I had a nice little slideshow set up for you guys with my slide showing kind of everything what I've been speaking upon since I've been here, even to Deanna, the fact that she's not doing what she's supposed to do. Yeah, we had the city council roasting her. That's why my agenda is about following the law. So Ms. Linda, as you most eloquently put out last week about the situation of following the law, did you know the 47% that's missing out of his, his little evaluation? That was the SPED kids. Isn't that considered frap? Aren't they supposed to be included? Wait, isn't that federal law? I think somebody might be willingly doing that. So I'm just curious, like, when my kids sat up here in October and this man got canned, and I don't understand why certain people change their votes, I probably never understood that until I beat him in federal court, then I'll finally get that answer. I'm just curious, if you have a whole public outcry about one gentleman? Because I remember our last superintendent. We never had this much of an outrage, never. Our last superintendent was not this much, I would say despised by the city, the state, when everybody, if you turn down corners and you mention Jesus Jara, browns come and grunts by our own governor. He called this man a liar on public television. And how is he still sitting here and getting an A? Like, the law does apply, AKA this letter. My son has a one-on-one. The law states that I'm supposed to be able to. That's why it was signed by a judge. I even got a renewal, but it won't be renewed because I can't get the superintendent's signature, simply because, you know, this whole why we'd be talking? It probably could retaliation because we almost got him fired once, and he had to pay out a whole bunch of money to get some jobs back. Deanna Trzaski, she's on that list of people that got that money. Kind of weird how that works when she's kind of head of our SPED department, right? I thought she already got enough money from SPED. So when you're not following the law and you're openly breaking the law, and when we're up here telling you guys you are breaking the law, I think that's kind of willingly known. If you're being told repeatedly that you are, and none of you obviously care, Mr. Jara. And by the way, tell Dan I said hi. The reflection off your glasses, let me know you're talking. So just when your due process is being ignored, we're in a due process right now, and it's been openly ignored for a year straight. What do you do? You guys are talking about the laws being willingly?
Mr. Bayless, your time is up. All right. Moving on to, Mr. Bayless, please don't, Mr. Bayless, thank you. Ellie Bosch? I just want to remind the public, and I'm sorry for not making this comment earlier. We're not going to, if you come and speak a public comment, we are going to ask everyone to address the entire board. This is not a, we will not address individual members on the dais. Ellie, welcome.
Hi. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Ellie Bosch. I'm a sophomore at Las Vegas Academy of the Art. I'm here to bring awareness to a major issue within our school system. Last Friday, I was on my way to make up a test at lunch, and all of the sudden, teachers started yelling, students started running. The hard lockdown alarm went off. It was not a drill. I managed to get into a classroom with other students. There was no teacher. We had to turn off the lights, lock the door, and barricade the doors. We were by ourselves. I was with no one else I knew. We were in there for half an hour. We were not told what was going on. We were scared for our lives. Fortunately for me, there was no immediate threat. But what if there had been? After the lockdown was over, we were expected to go on with our lives. We were expected to go back to normal. I have never seen so many people my age hugging and crying each other like they would never do it again. I was terrified. I texted my parents saying that I loved them, and I didn't know what was going on. We were all waiting to hear gunshots. We were not told what was happened, happened after the fact. Our teachers were not told what happened after the fact. We were told multiple different things. This is a very traumatizing situation to both teachers and students. Students are wondered if we're going to see people die in front of us. We're wondering if we're going to die. We're wondering if we're ever going to see our loved ones. Teachers are wondering if they have to give up their lives for their students or if they're going to watch their students die in front of them. I think this is a major issue within the way that we address these problems, and I and a couple other peers of mine propose the ALICE method. New Berlin does this, Wisconsin. This will allow us to alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and then evacuate if needed. The goal of this training is to make everyone aware of the threat inside of the building or on campus while also preparing for a lockdown and letting staff and students be aware of what is happening, taking course actions to get rid of the threat and then evacuating if needed or if it is safe to do so, where the lock the door and hide strategies may not be appropriate or beneficial to the situation. After these situations are over, students should then have a 10- to 15-minute assembly to allow students to de-stress and be told what they just experienced and acknowledge that it will take a toll. The assembly should readdress the school counselors and social workers if students would like to speak to someone for help. I truly hope this can be the first step to safety protocol, and I hope our voices will be heard. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ellie. Kristen Thomas. After Kristen. Trina Barbie. After Kristen Thomas. Triney Barbie. Then Matt Schreiber. Is Kristen not present? Is Triney Barbie present? Am I saying your name correctly?
It's Triney Barbie. And can you properly tell me how to address the committee since nobody kind of did it right?
It's okay. You're welcome. Thank you for being here. Please state your name for the record and just dive right in.
Hi, members of the board, madam presidents, all that good stuff. My name is Triney Barbie. I am the president and founder of a nonprofit organization called Check Rock. We raise awareness and prevention to suicide, bullying, and mental health. I'm not sure if I should have spoke up when the other committee was up there on 3.1, but as you can see, mental health is something that is a major issue within our school districts and a major contributing factor to some of those mental health problems are that these kids are being bullied. And the ultimate results with all three of those involved, they have thoughts of suicidal ideation. I personally have had friends and loved ones close to me complete suicide. I've had people come to me because they had ideas of suicide or they've been bullied. I'm here today, I don't have any kids in the C C S D biologically, but these kids are my heart. I've spent time with them outside of school on a regular. I'm here with a mother right now whose son is six years old in elementary, who was just attacked and bullied in a common course area. His clothes were cut off of him and cut holes in him, and he has scars and everything mentally and physically, and no one did anything. He screamed for help, and the teachers just set their plan on their phones. When she went to the school trying to get help from the principal, the principal ignored her wishes and just walked away. Bullying is something that's not just happening here in Nevada, but it's happening all over the world. And as you all are very grown adults, I'm pretty sure you've had dealt with bullies even up to today. So sometimes we have to figure out where the root of these bullies are coming from, and it starts within the schools. I'm here today to advocate for my nonprofit to be inside of our school district, making C C S D the first to have us. I am not from Nevada. I am originally from Detroit, Michigan, and I still go back and forth out there to advocate and help kids who have been bullied. I actually just helped a kid in Oklahoma with autism last year who was bullied, and his story went viral. I reached out to his family and got him justice. NBA players from all over reached out to him, you know, gave him encouraging words. I saved that kid's life, and I know that I can save many more kids' lives. And I just need the support of a committee like yourself and the funding, so that way I can get into these schools, provide a safe place for them, and know that somebody is fighting for them when they think no one else is. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for joining us today. Matt Schreiber? Matt present? We're going to move on. Bill Hanlon, and Hanlon. After Bill, I've got Vicki Creidel, Anna Binder, and Michael Simmons.
My name is Bill Hanlon. I'm going to provide you with one more reason why the community has to break up the school district. As you know, our students in high school math are struggling, and they're struggling for, because of some of the things that are happening at the leadership level. You should know that math is different from other subjects. In other subjects like history, you can teach World War II before World War I or after Vietnam, doesn't make any difference. In science, you can teach biology before chemistry, after chemistry, or before physics, doesn't matter. In math, sequencing matters. Mastery matters. Fluency matters. And with the, what we have set up for the students in terms of taking their time, taking tests, taking retake tests, what's happening is we develop cracks in the primary grades that turn into holes in intermediate grades, and those holes connect, turn into ditches by middle school, and by the time they get to high school, they're canyons that kids have trouble getting across. If we don't demand that we have our kids meet standards in a timely manner, they cannot pass. You know, if kids can't multiply and subtract, they can't divide. If they can't factor polynomials, they can't solve quadratics, and they can't graph. We have to have some system in place for subjects like math that really require that sequencing matters, mastery matters, fluency matters. Otherwise, all you have done is set our secondary students in math up to fail. And the fact is, that's been accomplished. We see what's occurring. And they're already facing other problems. Nevada has had a teacher shortage since 1985. If you're under 45 and you've been going to the Clark County School District, you were probably taught by an underqualified teacher. And it's got worse. These teachers unfortunately don't know how to help these kids. They don't know how to connect what they're teaching at the secondary level to the elementary level. So we don't have the qualified staff to help them, and the system we put in that may work for other subject areas clearly does not work in math, and you've seen that. I would appreciate it that we start paying attention to some of those things that we do up here that we congratulate ourselves on. Giving kids extra time, I get it, but at the same time, what I also get is, when you get to the secondary level and you're taking a class in Algebra II, there's an expectation you cover certain material. You don't cover that material, and the kid moves on, you have developed more holes in his curriculum, which puts his future in terms of being able to be successful in science, technology, or engineering at risk. Not at risk. You set him up to fail. Thank you.
Vicki Creidel, Anna Binder, Michael Simmons.
Good evening, Vicki Creidel, for the record. I'm speaking as president of N E A of Southern Nevada for this topic. I have heard from a couple people that the TACs that are formed at schools, the Teacher Advisory Council, that is in our contract under Article 10, are being formed by C C E A members, and they're excluding anyone who's not a C C E A member from participating in the school TAC. I couldn't find anything in the contract that allows for that. I have teachers who are very upset, who'd like to participate in the TAC, have a voice. I think TACs are important right now. There's a lot happening in our schools that could probably be mitigated with some teacher input. So I am asking you to make sure that our TACs that are operating at school sites are not excluding anyone, so that everyone who wants to can participate in the TAC. That's it. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Anna Binder? Michael Simmons?
All right, last time I promise. Anna Binder, for the record, madam president, members of the board, Superintendent Jara. Tried to get it in the three minutes, but oh, my gosh. So as a slight little continuation, you know, we hear time and time again, all kinds of things about our E L L learners. I was completely horrified this past week by receiving messages from some teachers in our bottom-performing schools who attended a virtual letters training. I believe it was centered around pre-K. I'm not 100 on that. I do know who did it. But during the presentation, at least two times, our E L L learners were referred to as our new little Mexicans. How not cool? Like, right? Like, right? I mean, I couldn't imagine. I have a son who's Hispanic. If I pushed him into early education and ever found out that one of our educators or any staff was referring to him as our new little Mexican, what would you do as a mother? Right? I notice some aren't looking at me right now while I say that, that would identify with that, but it is so hurtful. And I'm so glad that my son hasn't heard that. But what does that say about the investments of the millions of dollars of the priority to the ELL children that we're hiring outside people to come in and teach our staff this? Right? When you hear it once, you hear it twice. You hear it what, three, four, five times? That's your memory. That's your core memory. It's not okay. Right? Could you imagine like your daughter being called the new white bean? Or like, you know, something, right? New little Mexicans, little, like, it's not acceptable. And it was a white woman who said it. So where is the investment in, the equity and the priority of our ELL? Because I swear I am sick and tired of having to stand here to stand up for them. Because it seems like the other people in the community that stand up aren't listened to. And then I stand up and say something and then it's like, Diana, thank you so much for saying something. This is atrocious. I hope to God that presenter is never hired again in that company. And I'm trying to figure out the exact company because I see a lot of spending for this letters training. And I don't think I can tie it exactly to one company yet, but you guys know who you pay, sir? Don't contract with them. Because if I hear that again, I am gonna take that to the feds too.
Michael Simmons. Is Michael present? Welcome.
Thank you, members of the board, Superintendent Jarra. First time attendee of this and wow, I do appreciate the uh, the uh enthusiasm from the crowd. I do not want your job, I can promise you, Mr. Superintendent. I'm hoping, I'm not here to blame or point fingers at anybody tonight. I just hope to shed some light on something that I think could help save the district and not just the district, a lot of county entities, a lot of money. I'm with a company called ROIT. I've been in this community for over 35 years. We are an IT integrator, MSP, a managed service provider, for those of you who don't know what that is. We're also an MSSP, a managed service security provider. We bid on a lot of contracts and we have over the years. About a year and a half ago, I decided to take upon myself to figure out what was going on within the, the basically SLED, if you state local education area and why more local companies weren't winning the business. And it came down to a little secret that, you know, a lot of folks don't know about. An RFP process where manufacturers give special pricing to a, a vendor of their choice. And what happens in that process is an out of state uh manufacturer's rep, whether it's be Arizona, California, is palling around with their buddies from another vendor like us or somebody else. There's lots of us in Vegas, by the way, a lot of good ones. And they're giving them special pricing or registered pricing, they like to call it, on an RFP. It's a public RFP. That vendor gets 10 to 20 points more of a discount than I would or someone else who didn't register that, that deal. What does that mean to you? That means that when I come in and bid on it, I've lost already. It's really just a formality at that point in time. A year ago, there was a county entity here in Las Vegas that basically had been buying from the same vendor for 25 years. They were guaranteed best price. Somebody came along and said, well, let's check it out. Let's test them. Let's send it out to bid. The winning bid was $480,000 less than the bid from the company they'd been buying from for 25 years with best price. But they were also promised 10% back for every million that they spent. If we do that math, 480,000 in a single transaction seems to trump. You know, it's every million you spend getting $100,000 back. So again, all I wanna do is bring it to your attention. I was, I'm trying to enlighten as many county entities and SLED vendors as I, or entities as I can. Because I think this is a real problem that could put hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, back into our community. Thank you.
We're gonna move on to the yellow cards at this time. Gina Grierson. And Shakita Andrews, then Lisbeth Lozaro Vajino.
Uh, good evening, board members, Superintendent Jarra, for the record, Gina Grierson, Nevada Voters for Animals. Um, I came tonight because I'm concerned about a situation that was occurring at one of the uh high schools last week. I was told that there was a company by the name of um Desert Squad Pest Control and Wildlife hired at one of the high schools to uh trap uh and euthanize some cats that were under the portables that they were having an issue with. I, I was deeply concerned about that because I'm not aware that it is legal for any pest control company to be euthanizing cats. So um, there, thankfully I was able to intervene and meet with the principal. And he gave um, a couple nonprofits and volunteers the opportunity to trap those cats humanely. And um, they're working on that right now. But I'm still deeply concerned because the company said, and I mean, I literally have a recording of this, that yes, they were going to trap, they were going to euthanize the cats, but they would not tell us how. And the only person that could tell us was the principal. I have an email into the principal. There's been several requests to find out what the intentions for those cats were. Because this raises a bigger issue for me as far as the pest control companies on a, on another level. But I also hope that facilities or whoever's in charge, I mean, there's hundreds of schools. I know this can't be the only school, but there's issues with maybe some feral or community cats. Um, we, it is not humane to trap and kill them. I understand sometimes if there's a nuisance or there's a severe safety issue where that maybe that would need to happen, but that, they would need to be trapped and then taken to the animal foundation or to a veterinarian uh for euthanasia. We're still trying to get clarification on whether any of these agencies have the ability or authority uh to euthanize cats. But um, I'm hoping that we can, you know, work something out with the school district to have a more humane policy on these. Because I know that there's other um areas in the school district where there are colonies of cats that are cared for and loved. And this is how we handle this now. We don't trap and kill anymore. They live, they, we have hundreds of thousands of cats that live in our communities. Um, and the, the, the other concern that I had is that this company was paid $6,000 when volunteers did it for free. I uh also have a question about whether there is a humane education program. Um, I authored the Felony Animal Cruelty Law in 2011 and 2012. Uh, the first case down here was two teenagers um at a high school that drowned two kittens in a cup. I know just in August, I believe.
I'm sorry, your, your time is up. You're welcome to submit written public comment. We would be delighted to include that in the record. Thank you, Ms. Grierson. Shakita Andrews. And then Lisbeth Lozaro Vajino, and then Miguel Sanchez. Welcome.
Hi. Hi, I'm, I'm Shakita Andrews. And um, this adorable little sweatshirt is my son's and it is ha- has cut marks all through it on both sides. He was colored and cut. He got this sweater um, September 15th, which was his birthday. Then September 30th, he was attacked at school. And I got no call about it from the principal or any of the teachers. But um, I've actually been going through quite a few things with the principal at this particular school. It's Ruby Duncan Elementary School. Um, I am a disabled veteran and I'm also a domestic violence survivor. I'm also a published author and I deal a lot with those who have been through abuse and I do not tolerate bullying of any kind. When my oldest daughter was bullying my younger ones, I embarrassed her publicly when things that I was doing behind closed door wasn't working. So when it comes to my children and all bullying, I have been up to multiple schools through CSD, CCSD multiple times for months on end to try to get bullying to stop. And now my baby boy, my six-year-old son is experiencing it and there has been no resolve. Nobody's acting like they know what's happening, but if I, I know if I were to send him to school like that, CPS would have been called on me because I am the one who is taking care of him at home. And if he would have said what had happened at school to him, uh, to one of his teachers, somebody would have had to report that. But nobody is providing me any kind of explanation as to why my son came home with these cuts on him and he had tear stains on his face. There are a lot of kids that are still recovering from, like she said, mental health things. The, a lot of it is um, the root issue is there's abuse going on at home. There might be some going on at school. There is no particular look for abuse, but when it's happening and it's presented, there is nothing that's being resolved. And I even requested a change of schools and I was denied. And I don't understand what would need to happen for it to be considered bullying and actually be transferred where he's safe. He's six years old and every morning he does not wanna go to school. He gets up, he cries, he comes and wraps his arms around my neck and asks if he has to go to school. And some days I don't. I give him a break. I'm just like, no. I've actually switched him out, but I have two older kids that are still in the school, in the, in the school district. And it's exhausting to keep on going up to the schools for bullying and nothing is being handled. Like, nothing. I really, at this point, I want jobs because my son was assaulted. And if he had done that to another child, I know I would have gotten called home or a call about at home. So I need something done. And I would like to start getting into schools to help because I know that there are a lot of underlying issues. But if I can get my kids from bullying other people, I need other people to get their kids from bullying mine. And I need the teachers or the staff, somebody to help.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Lisbeth Lozaro Vajino.
Hi, um, good, good afternoon, um, Clark County Board, um, Board of Districts. I am here to talk about my experience with Core.
Please say your name.
Uh, my name is Lisbeth Lozaro Vajino. I am here to speak about Core and my impact, um, um, how they impacted me. So I came from two immigrant parents who never went to college. College was never on their um, future. So for them, for me to go, going to college was very important to them. But not having the resources um, handed to them was really hard. But um, at the beginning, at the end of fifth grade, um, Core, which at the beginning was called, I Have A Dream Program, came to the school district to uh West Preparatory Academy and announced that they are um, building this program to help students um, go to college. So my mom was there to um, sign up the paperwork, do everything that you have to do in order to be part of the program. Ever since um, the, I've been in the program since 2013 till now, I am part of the family of Core. And not only Core helped me get into college, it helped me get um, um, what is you say, um, scholarships, um, community service, resources for mental health. We have somebody special there to help us with our mental health. Because we know that college is hard. College is everywhere and bugs and everything. They were there to supply us with um, school supplies. They were there to help us um, get into schools because I know many parents out there, many students don't know how to sign up for a um, scholarship. They don't know how to sign up for a school. You know, there's a lot of parents out there who are waiting for that opportunity. And Core was there to impact me to go to college. I am a first generation college student. I am still at, I'm a uh UNLV student. I was just transferred from CSN. I graduated with my associate's degree. Now I'm pursuing my bachelor's degree in comprehensive of medical imaging and radiology. And not only Core was there to help me, they also helped my parents. My parents are part of the Core system of parents where they get help with supplies, food, um, clothing, um, hygiene prog- um, products, anything like that. And now I have a sister who is there, who is now gonna be the second generation of um, Core. Um, they had their first, in 2019, they had their first graduate class of 100% of the students graduating from Core. And not only Core provided that support, but I know Core is gonna provide support for other people out there who need the support to go to college, to get the support for community service. Community service is very important. And now especially in, in college applications, they ask for community service, but not a lot, a lot of people know about this community service. And I just know that Core helped me graduate high school, helped me graduate a two-year college program. And now I'm gonna graduate to um, UNLV in two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisbeth. Keep going. Very proud of you. Miguel Sanchez, Sergio Jacobo. Welcome and please state your name for the record.
My name is Miguel Sanchez. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about Core too. So I started Core this summer and I do have a sister that was with Core since freshman year of high school. She recently graduated this year and is still receiving help from Core. Core helped her sign up and receive scholarships to be able to pursue education and be able to achieve her future goals. Um, they provided us with much support during the COVID. Um, sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. Um, yeah, but during Co- COVID, they helped us, they reached out to us and they would provide us with the resources and all the help we needed during this time. And um, since I've been with Core, um, they've.
Uh, Miguel, give me one moment, please. Go ahead.
Since I've been with Core, they've been there and made sure to provide me with that educational and emotional support that I need. Core accepted me with open hands and has made me a better person overall. I've always been a shy and very secluded person. Um, they've helped me get out of my comfort zone and become more outgoing. Um, I hope Core can spread around more um, around Vegas and hopefully maybe at one point uh to different states. They've been a huge support to me and my family. And will continue to be for, for my next sister over there too. To the point when she graduates, everything. Thank you for your time. Have a great day.
Mil gracias, Miguel. Is Sergio here? Please state your name for the record. Welcome.
Um, my name is Sergio Jacobo Jr. Uh, I am a current CSD student and part of Core. I'd like to talk about my experiences and what Core has to offer to other students. So Core has really helped me and my family with basic necessities that we may have needed and all the relief that we needed during the COVID pandemic. I have been able to express myself just a bit more. And during the pandemic, I have become very reserved and kind of closed myself off to people. But they've really been helping me with emotional, mental, psychological support. But I can be the best person I can be and hopefully achieve my dreams for my future. Core offers, as I said, they offer basic necessities for whatever a family would need. They offer so many opportunities for students to be able to sign up for scholarships, being able to be a part of the community, help everyone. And if they could be, they could just spread around the state, even just the city. It'd be a great help to so many students. Cause I know there's a lot of people out there that may really need this and they just have nowhere to go to. They have no information. They just have no clue of what to do. So Core could help them get on track, help them achieve their goals, get their, get their life going and hopefully help the next generation. So I'd just like to say that I'm thankful for everything that Core has done to me and my family. And I hope they can continue to help people right now and in the future. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Sergio. To all of our students, good luck as you continue this school year. Thank you for being here. Now it's time to move on to item 5.01. Upcoming meeting announcement. The upcoming meeting of the Board of Trustees, the next meeting is Wednesday, November 2nd. Forgive me. That's, uh, please note, November 2nd has been canceled. The next meeting of the Board of Trustees is November 17th. The next meeting of the Board of Trustees is November 17th at 5:00 PM here in the boardroom. What's your name, sir? Okay, go ahead, Matt. Welcome.
You, my name is Matt Schreber. I attended this school board meeting two weeks ago with my two sons and about a dozen other Centennial High School students. They wanted to come again tonight, but they didn't want to have to wait another four and a half hours to talk, so I'm here on their behalf. I wanted to attend tonight to thank you and whoever else at CCSD was responsible for listening to us two weeks ago, and to thank you for listening to the thousands who signed the online petition and sent emails. Thank you for reinstating Keith Whipperman as the principal at Centennial High School. It's still a little, a little disheartening to not have any information as to why such a rash decision was made in the first place, and as to why no information was communicated to the parents or students. It's also disheartening to hear that it did not only happen at Centennial High School. Channel 13 had a report a week ago that principals were changed at Palo Verde and Durango High Schools, and Garside and Fertitta Junior High School. Are there others? Where? Why? No transparency and no notification to parents. In the Centennial situation, some parents might not have even known that Principal Whipperman was even removed until they received the email from CCSD that he was coming back. How is that possible? The lack of transparency and the removal of principals with no notification is disheartening. As a parent, when a situation like this occurs, I'm not asking for CCSD to give every last detail, but there should be some sort of notification and brief explanation when the dramatic action of removing a principal mid-school year is taken. Otherwise, it looks very suspicious, and conspiracy theories or defamatory comments will run rampant. Parents are invested in the education of their children and deserve to know whether or not an egregious violation of policy occurred when a principal is removed in the middle of a school year. Otherwise, you are detrimentally hurting students by negatively affecting the strong relationship and stability that they have with their school administrators. We parents demand transparency. We demand to be able to be a part of our children's education. Please be better, address these concerns, and let the community know why so many principals have been reassigned mid-school year without any notice to parents. I would also ask that you change this public comment policy you currently have. If a CCSD student takes the time to come to a board meeting on a school night, don't make them wait here for four and a half hours, be able to speak to you for three minutes. Let them speak at the beginning, the middle, or at the end of the meeting, whenever they're able to get here and set aside time from their schoolwork, sports, and other activities. You can't talk to them or take action on their concerns that night anyway, but at least let them know that you value them and their time. Let them get home so they can get to bed. They have school the next morning. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like that is, that concludes public comment. At this time, I'd like to go back to 5.01. The next meeting of the Board of Trustees is on November 17th at 5:00 PM here in the boardroom. Moving on to item 6.01, adjournment. Trustee Guzman.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Trustee Cabazos.
Thank you. I second that motion, please.
Trustees, we have a motion by Trustee Guzman, a second by Trustee Cabazos. Please cast your vote. Motion passes, seven to zero. The time is now 7:00 PM. Thank you, trustees. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.